Bill Hauck. Michael Drinkwater. John Enlow. John Flansburgh. Casey Mensah. Chris Melton. Dave Solero. Mervyn Wright. Kara Stealin. We have a quorum.
Ms. Purge, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Chris Melton is on Zoom.
And can Chris, can you hear us?
Yes.
Afraid to show your face?
My camera's on.
Okay. As long as we can hear you. Okay. A little bit of humor, that's all. Item number two is public comment, and I will add that on Agenda I of five, we are discussing and possibly making a recommendation to the Regional Water Planning, or the Western Regional Water Commission for a public at-large member appointment. So we are going to take advantage of the public comment period to have applicants, if they choose to, to give their three-minute spiel for us. So I'm assuming we have some public speaking here, public comments? Just the five? Okay. Well, I'll take the first one.
Another speaker on item five.
Oh, okay. I understand now. So would you like to address the board regarding Agenda Five, Jerry Wagler?
I think the idea was to take, was to use the public comment period associated with that specific item to hear the individuals who want to speak. So right now, we're on general public comment, but you can take public comment at item five, and then they can speak at that time.
Okay. That wasn't explained to me. Is there any public comments other than those directed at item five?
I have none.
None, okay. Very good. Then we'll move on to item three, approval of the agenda. Are there any discussions on this agenda?
I move to approve.
Okay, we got first and a second. All those in favor say aye. Item number four is approval of the minutes from the April 5, 2023 Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting. Hear any discussion on that item? I hear an approval for that. Motion? Move to approve.
Solero.
Second. Flansburgh.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Also, I meant to state that if you make a motion or a second, please state your name, as folks just did, so it's easier for the record be transcribed. Right then, Agenda item five, action discussion, possible direction to staff, and recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission for the Northern Nevada Water Public Commission public at-large member appointment. And we do have public comments on this item. I think after those comments, we'll have some discussion. So I'd like to go with Jerry Wagler first.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to apply for this. Since this is an at-large position, I assume you're looking for broad experience. I certainly have been very fortunate in my career in having that, both programmatically, technically, as well as working with a variety of agencies, NGOs, and interest groups. If I have any priorities, really, it would be watershed protection, restoration, and education, particularly targeted at young people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, and Staff. I'm Michael DiMartini, and I can and I am willing to serve on this commission. I have reviewed the criteria and rating schedule adopted by this commission on March 1, 2023, and use that as a guide for my application for this commission, which is a recommendation to the Western Regional Water Planning Commission. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Howenstein. Introduce myself. I see a few familiar faces. I'm applying for this commission position because I think that sustainability and water resources is one of the key indicators of whether or not we're going to be able to develop in the future. And, you know, we seem to have an issue of, you know, stressing out in the spring when the floods come through, and then stressing in the summer if we're going to have enough water. So currently, I'm a board member of Western Nevada Development District. Some of you may know that group, and we work on infrastructure. I've done that for 10 years. I'm also the engineer for Pershing County, so I review all the building applications. And I see this issue of water being something I really have a passion about, so I would hope you consider me. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Lazareschi, and I don't see any. No, no, okay. And then finally, Ms. Rigdon, and we have an applicant who submitted a message to us. Would you like to read that, please?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. This message was sent on June 3 to the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, and Ms. Lin Nguyen could not make the meeting and wished that this be, asked that this be read into the record. Dear members of the commission, I am grateful for the opportunity to address the commission and regret not being able to attend in person. Thank you for considering, excuse me, considering my candidacy for the public-at-large representation on the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission. I am a professional engineer with over 20 years of experience in water quality management, research, and regulatory oversight. For nearly 17 years as a state of Nevada employee, I have implemented numerous programs, led special projects, and worked with stakeholders to develop strategies to protect and enhance Nevada's water resources. As a resident of Trekkie Meadows, I am invested in sustainable water resource planning. I currently serve on the Nevada Water Innovation Institute Board of Advisors, and I understand local priorities and ongoing activities to ensure water resilience and sustainability in the Trekkie Meadows. My passion is ensuring clean and reliable water to improve people's lives and maintain a healthy environment. I have been fortunate to work with dedicated professionals and renowned experts to address the most pressing water-related issues to support sustainable development and ensure a healthy ecosystem. With the growing demand, dwindling supply, and impairment concerns, proper water resource planning, management, and protection are the most pressing needs. I am committed to helping protect and enhance this precious resource and ensure our community's well-being. Therefore, this opportunity to serve the community with my passion, skills, and experience is a privilege. I hope you will favorably consider my candidacy, and I look forward to serving with you. Best regards, My Lin.
So with this issue, then, we have a board process. And I think that, Ms. Rigdon, if you'd like to highlight that process based on your staff report?
Yes, Chairman. Thank you so much. And members of the commission, Kim Rigdon for the record. The nomination process allows, as you saw, allowed each candidate to address the board during the public comment period. Now that the public comment period has closed, the commission may go into deliberation and discuss anything that the commission wants to discuss. You're allowed to ask questions, but we don't have a formal questions-and-answer period. So if there's no questions, we can go directly into the ballot. You should receive an email as soon as you're done deliberating. We won't send it to you until the commission is done deliberating. Once you're done deliberating, the chairman can let me know, and we'll send a link through your emails. And if there's anybody that doesn't have their cellphone or access to their email, we do have a computer set up for anybody who needs access to that to do the vote. It'll be much like our priority setting workshop, where you click on the link, you're going to enter your name, and make your nomination. Once you've all entered your ballots, I'm going to scurry down to the podium, because I couldn't connect my computer up here, and I'll display the results. The results will show everybody's individual nominations and the total of those nominations. Once we have those totals, if the majority of the board has voted for, or if one candidate has a majority of votes from the commission, then the commission can go ahead with a motion to recommend that person for appointment with the WRWC. If there ends up being a tie, or we don't have a majority of votes, we would go into a tiebreaker, which I have another link prepared. So we would take the old one down off the screen. I'll enter in there the top two candidates with the top two votes, and we can revote on those two candidates and try to get a majority of the board. And then you can make that recommendation as well. So whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and start deliberations and let me know when you want me to.
Well, open up discussion by saying that, in my experience with this commission, our public-at-large representative commissioner was always a representative of the environment, environmental aspects, particularly the last two members were with the, senior moment here.
Nature conservancy.
Nature conservancy, thank you. And I thought they did a good job, and I think that's a reasonable background to represent the public at large. So those are my comments, and I'll open up to the rest of the board for discussion. Yes, please.
So first of all, I just want to say I'm impressed with the quality of the candidates that we received, and just, Kim, compliments to you and your staff on putting this process together, because I think we did get some very good applicants. As was mentioned, in regards to, Mickey Hazelwood had served here, and of course, he represented that environmental biological conservation side of things. And so that's kind of how I'm viewing this as I review the candidates. But again, I just want to say very impressed with the quality of candidates that we have. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Chair, Solero.
Yeah, I want to double up on those comments from Commissioner Flansburgh. In addition, I'm glad that we put the criteria together early before this process, just to have something to go back and review all those applications against. Made it very, very helpful. So thank you, Kim, and everybody else for putting that together. And I am really impressed that we did get the quality of candidates that we got specifically for this board. I think it shows, you know, kind of how important this board is in our community. So thank you for that.
Any other comments or discussions? Any points? None? Okay, then, Ms. Rigdon, I guess we'll go to the voting process.
Okay, so you should be receiving an email shortly from Jen, and we'll give you a few Did everybody get a chance to vote? Let me refresh it, because it looks like I don't have enough responses. So I just want to make sure I got everybody's. I have 10, so I'm missing one.
No, we have 11 members here. We have 11 members here voting.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out who. Mervyn, I haven't, yours hasn't come through yet. Okay, let's see.
Are we good, Chris? Got the nod.
Yep, we're good.
Commissioner Wright, I am not getting your vote. Would you mind maybe using your computer? I apologize. I don't know what the connection, might be a connection problem. Okay, we've got it. Okay, I do have the results up, and we can go ahead and display that on the screen. And I'll display the individual ballot nominations first. Oops, not those. There we go, my individual responses. And of course, now I'm in a spool. Okay, here we go. All right, so this is just a quick glance for the record at how each commissioner voted. And we have all 11 up here. Let me scroll down, because it looks like the number one one wasn't on the screen. And that'll be in the meeting minutes as well. And then if we go to the results, excuse me, it looks like we have six votes for Mrs. Nguyen, two votes for Jerry Wager, one vote for Dan Lazareschi, one vote for Mark Howenstein, and one vote for Michael DiMartini. And so with that, majority of the board, and maybe, Mr. Solero, you can help me with this one, because my understanding was, is to make a motion, we would have to have a majority of the board for one candidate? Or is it, can the board? Maybe you can clarify. I know you've done this with the county commission. I'm sorry to put you on this.
Yeah, no, no, it's quite all right. This is a process we've used at the county, and it's, the way we've done it there is the majority of the board. If there's one person that got the majority of the vote, that would be the person that would essentially move on. Yeah, not, yeah. So in this case, it looks like we have a majority of the board with one person. And so I don't think there's a need to vote again.
Yep. So I can turn the time back over to the board?
My watch doesn't have an answer for that either.
So do you need anything else from me on that? Or would you like to just go ahead?
Well, I think it's clear. We have a majority have voted for one candidate. So I'd like to hear a motion to approve that applicant to the Regional Water Planning Commission for admission to this council, to this commission.
Then if I may, I move that we recommend My Lin Nguyen to the Western Regional Water Commission as the at-large member for the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission.
Do I hear a second?
Enlow, second.
All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, there you go. Item number six, action, presentation, discussion, and possible direction to staff, and recommendation to the Western Regional Water Commission to approve Sierra Nevada Journeys One Water Nevada STEM Education Program. Scope of work and budget not to exceed $50,000 for fiscal year 2024. Ms. Rigdon.
Turned on here. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the commission, Kim Rigdon for the record. So it's my sincere pleasure to introduce Sean Hill, who is a CEO of Sierra Nevada Journeys. And Sierra Nevada Journeys provides STEM education, which is science, technology, engineering, and math education to students throughout the state, I believe, right? Is it the region, state? And we've been working with Mr. Hill to develop a scope of work to incorporate recycled water education in alignment with our One Water Nevada Education Plan, Communication Plan efforts. And so I, Mr. Hill is here to present that scope of work and what you guys do, and then afterwards, where staff is looking for, we prioritize this in our fiscal year 24 budget setting, and we'll be looking for the board to recommend this to the WRWC for approval.
Thank you, Kim. Thanks, everybody, Commissioner, Chairman, and members of the commission. Good afternoon. Again, my name is Sean Hill, and I serve as the CEO of a not-for-profit organization called Sierra Nevada Journeys. We have been in operation since 2006 and started up right here in Reno, where we have the majority of our programs serving Northern Nevada students. So I have a little presentation for you today. I'm going to give you background on our organization and why we think we would be a good fit for this project. I'll review some other projects that we've done that are relevant, and then I'm here, you know, if there's, I'm open to Q and A, if there's any questions during or after. So thanks again for having me here today. Birgit, are you running the slides? Maybe I get to run the slides, okay. Oh, great. That's okay. So why are we here? I have a couple stats up in front of you today. Seventy percent of teachers spend less than three hours each week on science education, let alone watershed education. There has been an extreme focus on math and English language arts in our public schools going back a couple of decades. And so science education has been deprioritized. In fact, what's focused on in schools is what's tested at the end of the year, and the science exams, the official state science exams only happen in fifth grade, eighth grade, and then again in high school, whereas kids are tested every year in math and English language arts. So there's been a real deprioritization there. And Sierra Nevada Journeys, we try to fill that gap with great hands-on science enrichment programs for students in our community. Also, you have kids that are in front of screens 15 times longer than they play outdoors. That is a staggering statistic, and so we get really excited about unplugging kids and getting them outside and getting them to experience our natural environment. We do that in a number of locations. We take kids to local natural areas along the Trekkie River, in local forests, and then we also have a camp, an overnight camp facility just over the border in Plumas County, where we run an overnight outdoor residential science program. So our mission is to deliver innovative outdoor science-based education programs for youth to develop critical thinking skills and to inspire natural resource stewardship. We have a few core educational programs that I'll run through here, and then the project in question would relate to one of these programs. So Classrooms Unleashed, that's our classroom outreach program, where we are bringing students, local students, to local natural areas. We also do hands-on presentations, science-based presentations in the classroom for those students. And then the field study is really a way, a time for the students to apply that learning that we've been doing in the classroom. I mentioned our outdoor school in Plumas County, Grizzly Creek Ranch. So we serve eight or 9,000 students a year up at Grizzly Creek Ranch with residential science outdoor camps, and that's during the school year, during the school week. We also serve many community partners with after-school programming and community-based partnership programs at Grizzly Creek Ranch. And then we have a wonderful family engagement program that we call Family STEM Nights. This happens at school sites throughout the school year, where our education team facilitates hands-on science STEM activities, in many cases watershed-based activities, for families that come to these events. This is a way for us to help schools with family engagement goals and in an academic environment that we've developed to be really fun and hands-on. Family STEM Nights is the program that we would implement the project in question tonight, today. If you can look at our impacts here, last year, we served over 26,000 students. Our students definitely represent a cross-section of our communities. Fifty percent last year were from low-income schools, as noted in the free and reduced lunch percentage eligibility of those schools. Sixty-one percent of those students were students of color, and 13% of the students were living with a disability. We do have some externally evaluated data that's exciting, that shows that 6% more students score at the proficient level on those fifth-grade science exams at schools where our programs are delivered, and that is after taking into account the economic differences of the schools that we serve. We did that study in partnership with the University of Nevada Reno. There are some projects, in addition to sort of our in-house programming, we do have a long track record of working with community partners and developing educational programming and messaging that we feel aligns with our mission, that can also help community stakeholders with their goals. We've built, you know, during the pandemic, actually, we spent a lot of time building some virtual materials that have been utilized all across the state. We worked with the Carson Water Subconservancy District on an interactive watershed map tool with activities for teachers that they can implement in the class without Sierra Nevada Journeys. We've worked with the Division of Water Resources on an educational game, a computer game called Floodfighters, and after students participate in that game, that's geared towards sixth grade or middle school. They, we developed lesson plans that teachers can implement that is relevant to that game. And then we've, for years, have worked alongside and have been sponsored by the Trekkie River Fund and the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection to deliver our watershed education initiative. to deliver our watershed education initiative, which is a hands-on watershed-based program for really second through eighth graders with focus in those grade areas where the state science standards are more relevant to the watershed programming. And that's been great. So we get kids out on the river all the time, over at the McCarran Ranch Preserve with the Nature Conservancy here in Northern Nevada, over at the Oxbow, Galena Creek, various tributaries of the Truckee, and also in Carson, along the Carson watershed as well. I have a list of partners there that we have deep partnership with, that we've established over the years. You can take a look at that. I won't try to read all of those, but I thought that was important to see a list of partnerships that we have currently in place. Back to the Family STEM Night program. This is a one and a half, 90-minute to two-hour event. It takes place in the evenings. The whole family is invited. These typically happen at elementary and middle schools in the five counties in northwestern Nevada. Schools will book these programs with us, and then Sierra Nevada Journeys will come and facilitate and deliver the whole program. They include interactive STEM and watershed stations. They, there's a culminating family design challenge. And these have gotten very popular. So we serve up to 50 events annually at 50 different schools in Northern Nevada. Average attendance is about 150 participants. And these are very much multi-generational activities. It's at the middle or elementary school, but older brother is there. Aunt and uncle might be there, grandma and grandpa. So this is really a phenomenal way for Sierra Nevada Journeys to bring messaging to families in our community. Oh, sorry about that. I did build a slide here to overview the project, which is that we're calling the One Water Nevada STEM Education Program. And the concept would be that we would work in conjunction with partners such as Tamoa and build messaging, educational programming around recycled water or the One Water Initiative and deliver that, those activities and that messaging through our Family STEM Night programming. Again, we'd work in conjunction with partners. We want to make sure that we're there to make sure that the activities are engaging, hands-on, and we want to make sure they're also factually correct and that we can stay on message with our partners. So the collaboration is very important. Year one, we have included in the budget curriculum development as well as piloting at schools and then revisions based on sort of what we're seeing on the ground, how they're being reacted to, accepted, that sort of thing. And then we also have funding for 20 schools to serve in fiscal year, in the first fiscal year. So that's, you know, about 3,000 participants here in Northern Nevada. And we wanted to focus on Washoe County for this pilot year. So again, it's curriculum development, it's pilot, and then it's delivery at 20 schools. So that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Hill? Yes, John, Mr. Ed Lowe.
Not really a question, but more comments. I just wanted to make sure this board was aware. I mean, Tamoa has had a very long relationship with Sean and Sierra Nevada Journeys, funding them independently, and then also they're pretty much annual recipients of funding from the Truckee River Fund that we contribute to. And we find their education programs to be very successful and really well-recognized and appreciated by the community. I think this, this concept evolved from our discussions with Ms. Rigdon and Mark Milan and Robert Sharpton here on our One Water Nevada efforts. And we thought Sierra Nevada Journeys would be a great partner to help get the message out on recycled water throughout the community. And based on that, I mean, I fully support their effort. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Drinkw.
Sorry, excuse me. Thank you, Mr.. A simple question. I'm fully supportive, and you know, both of my kids went through S and J programs back in the day, and you know, had a great time and learned some stuff. So that's not the question. 20 schools out of, I don't know how many schools Washoe County has, how do you pick? How do you target? Who, winners or losers, frankly?
How does it work? Our strongest sort of marketing force has always been word of mouth. So schools, we've always operated on sort of a first-come, first-served. And so schools will approach us. We have had instances in the past where, more of a top-down approach, where we might approach a district administration team. And, you know, they like what we do, and so they tell X amount of schools to go do Sierra Nevada Journeys. That doesn't always work because there really needs to be investment in the school to book a program with us. There's fundraising associated with it in some cases. The school has to, you know, devote planning time to it, communication with parents and all that. So we, we do sort of an email marketing blast a couple times a year. We tell folks what kinds of programs that we have. We target teachers and administrators, and then they call us if they're interested in those programs. So with the Family STEM Night program, we have high recidivism. I don't know if that would be the right way to look at it, but every, usually when a school signs up for that program, it's a really positive experience, and it becomes baked into the tradition of the school. So we have a lot of longtime schools that come back every year for the Family STEM Night program. But yeah, it's a first-come, first-served. They book with us, and that tends to work really well.
Different question. The material, since this is brand-new, I mean, Sierra Nevada Journeys, you've been in business for 20 whatever years. I don't know. But One Water Nevada is fairly new. Reaching out, public outreach on recycled water is a developing industry, if you will. So I'm looking at the materials that you develop in conjunction with the partners. How do we, I'm looking for iterative feedback. When you're out with the community and you're getting, if particular questions keep reappearing, we have an opportunity to address those in real time? Or is it, well, come see us next year. We'll, we'll take all that feedback and maybe tweak the materials for the next school year. What's our feedback loop look like?
Yeah, good question. So we want to develop this summer and fall, pilot this fall. From that pilot, take that feedback to iteratively change the program potentially. And then when we roll out, the full rollout for the rest of the year, the rest of the 20 schools, use the refined program. So we don't want to do all 20 schools and then refine. That's why the pilot's in place. We want to, you know, build, deliver in maybe five schools, then take feedback and refine. And we're happy to share, you know, along the way, what we're seeing, what we're hearing, the changes that we're making. But that's, we have a very reflective educational staff. And so it's kind of our culture to, you know, is this working? If not, why not? What can we change? So we want to implement that in this way. But yeah, we would do the refinement before we do the full rollout.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Solero.
This one's actually for Ms. Rigdon. Just knowing the budget we planned, this had a TBD in the slot. Was the, was the thought that we would take this out of contingency piece? Is that the, is that the kind of the mechanics behind how that works with the budget?
That's correct. It would come out of that to-be-determined line item contingency.
Okay, just wanted to verify.
Anyone else?
So I just, Sean, just want to thank you for the service that you provide because it's very much needed. And with that, I would make a motion that we recommend Sierra Nevada Journeys to the Western Regional Water Commission for approval of this agreement for the One Water Nevada program.
And I'll second Henderson.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. It's disappointing to see sciences fell down the ladder. But it's encouraging to see your passion, obviously, and that the Water Planning Commission may have a future in our next generations.
It's our goal. Thank you very much.
Move on to item number seven. Manager's report, Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the Commission, Kim Rigdon for the record. If I could turn your attention to attachment 7A, I'm just going to highlight a couple projects on there. Some of them, you've heard some presentations in the last few weeks or last few months, excuse me. But I did want to give you some updates on the Enhanced Source Control Phase II project. And UNR contacted us and gave us an update and said they've completed the sampling and monitoring plan for the Reno-Stead Water Reclamation Facility baseline study. The preliminary data that they're going to collect over the next six months will be evaluated, and they'll update that sampling plan and determine what constituents will be listed on the pollutant watch list and which ones will be included in the collection system monitoring priorities moving forward. UNR is working with Tamoa and the city of Reno to initiate, excuse me, to initiate the sampling and monitoring work for the facility. And they've been communicating with them on cost estimates and preliminary logistics. UNR is also nearly finished with the first draft of the Tamorf, Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility draft, and plans to host a kickoff meeting with them next month. Once they have a first round of reviews completed on the Tamorf plan, they said they're going to start to develop the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility Plan with Washoe County. The next project I just wanted to give a quick highlight on was the Environmental Incentives Water Quality Crediting Program. In January, Environmental Incentives, which is the contractor that's been leading this effort, began drafting what they call the Program Design booklet, excuse me. And the program document that this, the program document is, I'm sorry. The program document is called the Program Design booklet, or the booklet. I'm confusing myself. The document was being developed and focused on eligibility and crediting sections. And that effort requires ongoing engagement from NDEP. And NDEP, as we all know, is experiencing some significant staffing challenges and time dedication for projects outside of their normal scopes of work. And so they have not been able to engage fully in the project. And Environmental Incentives has said, as soon as they get word from NDEP that they have staff available to engage in the project, they will re-engage them. And so the project is on hold currently until that occurs. We are still going to continue to extend the contract deadline to make sure that they have time to do that over the next year. But we aren't dedicating any more funding or adjusting any scope of work items. That'll all be brought to the board as we find out more moving forward. Recently, we, staff has been working with the city of Reno, Washoe County, and Tamoa to plan a comprehensive North Valleys education outreach effort. We've talked about and scheduled a series, well, the first of a series, of open-house format workshops that will be sponsored by the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission and Western Regional Water Commission staff. And the first event is scheduled for June 22 from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And the venue is still a little bit up in the air. Washoe County is working on either the North Valleys Library or the North Valleys Regional Park. The effort is going to include the comprehensive list of projects and activities and studies and ongoing water planning that's going on in the North Valleys. And One Water Nevada will be a component of that. But this is a more comprehensive approach in partnership with Washoe County, City of Reno, and Tamoa to provide that more robust education outreach effort. Also, the, I attended a state water plan update. It's a state water plan stakeholder advisory committee. And the first, well, it was the second meeting yesterday, the first one that I've attended. And there was a few presentations on section one of the report and some of the climate change information and data that they're going to be using to make available for, to inform the plan. They are, they did talk a little bit about how the reconnaissance and assessments that Division of Water Resources had done in the 1960s and 70s that are used to establish basin perennial yield numbers and other information. They have some funding available that they're going to make a goal to redo some of those assessments or update many of those assessments. There's not a real list of which basins they're looking at yet. And they were looking for input from communities to identify basins that those communities would like an assessment update. So I just wanted to let the board know, you can contact me, and I can put that request in if you're interested in doing that. But we'll be following that closely. They said the next meeting, they're going to try to hold meetings quarterly. So the next meeting should be in the next three months, and I'll know a little bit more. We did answer a questionnaire, and I didn't bring it to the board in May because we didn't have a meeting. But the questionnaire was essentially, what do you think the goals of the plan should be? And giving us a little bit of an overview that the, the plan is a very high-level update of the 1999 state water plan. And the focus of that plan is going to be providing a tool to the communities. So I think they're looking to collect a lot of data and information that can provide a tool to the communities to use in their own local resource planning. We did ask for clarification on the plan, you know, what the driver was behind updating the plan, what they see the purpose of the plan being, and how they see the plan being coordinated at the local level with all the different local water authority agencies and planning initiatives happening. And we made a recommendation that they definitely incorporate the local planning activities into their overall bigger-picture plan so that they align. And that's all I have for project updates. I do have a few other projects on the table. If you have any questions on those, I'm happy to answer any questions on those if there was anything that the Commission had on that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion regarding location and possible agenda items for the upcoming Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission meeting and possible direction to staff. And I believe that next meeting will be August 2. Any thoughts on agenda items? Ms. Rigdon?
Chairman, thank you. Members of the Commission, Kim Rigdon for the record. So I just wanted to really quickly, I try and, I'm trying to set a goal. They gave you a fiscal year outlook at the meeting schedule at the beginning of the fiscal year. And there was just a couple of meeting dates. I put it up on the screen, and I'll definitely have it included in the meeting minutes and send it out to you all so that you all have a schedule of the meetings coming up. I don't have a meeting planned for July 5. It's the day after July 4, and we do not have any pressing items on the agenda. August 2, I put to be determined because it's really going to depend on whether we have the project updates and the folks available for presentations on that meeting. So I'll let you all know on that one. And it will be our fiscal year '23 fourth-quarter financial report. Of note, I scheduled the fiscal year '24 priorities workshop for October 4. And I'll be contacting each of you individually to get an idea of what you think our priorities should be to bring to that meeting. November 1 is our concurrent meeting with the Western Regional Water Commission to review those priorities. And then February 7 is the tentative budget approval so that we can submit that to the state. And April 3 are elections. So I'll get you all the schedule, and that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Do we have any discussion on this? Well, thank you very much. That'll be helpful. Agenda item number nine, any Commission comments? Seeing none. Staff comments, agenda item 10?
Any staff?
See none there? Item 11, public comments? Seeing none, then move to adjourn?